Now he's gone.
Whenever you guys are ready, you guys can start.
Is everybody here?
This conference will now be recorded.
I have the three selectmen, that's what I need.
Okay, I can't see everybody on the iPad, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
Well, Bill has somebody making rabbit ears for him.
Right.
He what?
I had to call technical support in.
Don't ask him, don't ask him.
All right, well, whatever it takes. All right, well, if it's 4:30, if everybody's ready, I will get started. I called Boris Leckman's meeting of Monday, May 18th, 2020, 4:30 PM. Called the meeting to order. Due to the increasing concerns surrounding the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain closed to the public. There are no scheduled public hearings and there will be no public comments, period. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 6, 9, or 98. A live feed and recording of the meeting will also be posted on the EB Cam website, www eb-cam.org. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Very nice, Brian. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Clark, would you go over our agenda for the evening, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have an appointment with the Veterans Agent, Chris Buckley, to give us an update on the food drive and Memorial Day service. We have several action items. Town Administrator Report, followed by announcements, staff reports, board discussions, and that is it.
Great, thank you. So, Chris, you are our only appointment, we'll go right to you if you want to give us that update on the food drive and also Memorial Day services.
Thank you. Everybody is doing well. Everything is on schedule for both of our events this week. First, on Wednesday, from 10 to 12, we will be at the high school handing food out to vets and collecting food for the local food pantries. I've been in contact with them and we split in whatever comes in. And I want to thank everybody who has already started to donate, that is going well. And I got shortly with, a short time ago, with the organizer on the fundraiser side of it, and told me that we've already registered over 30 vets here in town. And so now, what we'll do the next two days is we'll make a push to get as many vets on the South Shore food as possible, from here, right here in East Bridgewater. I spoke with an EB resident who is kind enough to donate some pastry and bread, bread pug products for our drive as well. So our vets will get a veteran food box and a few loaves of bread on top of what they would normally get.
Wonderful.
And like I said, that's going well, we're getting a lot of hands on deck on that, a lot of people reaching out to me. And like I said, I really appreciate it, it's the town putting this on, not my office, it's working out rather well. Onto Memorial Day, from, sorry, from, at 2 o'clock, we will record our ceremony. It'll be 15 to 20 minutes over at the common, it'll be very select individuals. If our town administrator or any other selectman would like to be there, we have room for you. Don't think our social distancing kicks you out of our ceremony by any means, if you want to attend, please do. Like I said, it's going to be about 15, 20 minutes, we'll read the names of all the EB vets that have passed away over the last year. As far as other dignitaries that'll be there, State Senator Brady has reached out to me himself and said he would like to attend, so he will be there. And Senator Timolty's office will probably end sending a video. I haven't heard from either one of the reps' offices, but with everything we have going on, they've got a lot of other things that they have to retain, have to take care of. So that being said, we will go ahead and tape that on Thursday, it'll run on Monday on Memorial Day on our local channels. And then also between the Patriotic Committee and myself, we'll make sure that all the flags are placed on the cemeteries. And pending any questions, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Anyone, Dave or Bill, do you have anything to add or question?
What time is the food drive?
Food drive is 10 o'clock in the morning.
What time is the food drive on Wednesday?
10 AM, Dave.
Anything, Bill, anything, you good?
As long as Dave doesn't interrupt me. And, you know, we'll be joined. We appreciate your efforts on getting this going, Chris, thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thanks, everybody.
We love technology, technology is a wonderful thing. Thank you, Chris, very much for organizing that.
finely tuned operation on this.
I think, I do think, given what I saw the governor say today, that we can safely start meeting in person again. And that will be, will be much easier. But, thank you, Chris, for that update, and thank you for what you're doing for the food drive for the vets and to get a Memorial Day service that will be meaningful to people, even if we can't do it in the way we've always done. We appreciate what you're doing. Okay, let's move on to action items, Mr. Clark.
Madam Clark, I authorize Carol Julius, Chairwoman of the East Bridgewater Board of Selectmen, to execute and deliver the project funding agreement and any amendments thereto for the Central Elementary School project, as well as make final binding decisions with respect to such project funding agreement on behalf of the town and to bind the town to its terms and conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Second, maybe, can you hear me?
I can hear, yep, I heard you, it's a little bit of a delay, but it came through fine. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, what? Yes, no? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All right, I think that was unanimous. Okay. Passes unanimously.
Can you move to Town Hall? I make a motion, we move to Town Hall for the rest of this meeting.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2020, 4:30 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Anyone, okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th, 2020, 4:30, okay.
Maybe, I guess.
I got the second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye?
Nope. Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Aye, aye, aye.
Is it, is it talk like a pirate day, what's happening? All right, moving right along.
Make a motion to approve Nancy Hill to the Old Colony.
Real good job, Madam Chair.
Old Colony Elder Services, effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
David, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second, third, fourth, fifth, yep.
Andy, is there any discussion that Nancy, I see you're here with us, but you know that we're going to put you right back on that board, because it's just so fun, and you actually, Nancy is president of Old Colony Elder Services, and she does a great job running those meetings, so. Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go, the motion carries, congratulations, Nancy. I'll see you tomorrow at some meeting. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the request from the Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to WB Mason for paper supplies for a 12-month period commencing on July 1st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Apparently that's a second.
Second, yep, a second.
Any further discussion? Please, no further discussion.
Second.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I think David says aye, I don't know.
Yeah.
There it is, he said aye, okay, motion carries.
Yeah, aye, 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 yeah.
All right, motion carries, Bill?
All right, and make a motion, make a motion to approve the Southeastern Regional Service Group, DPW Supplies Contract Award Sheet commencing July 1st, 2020, for a 12-month period. Over.
Second.
We should have walkie-talkies.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Be a lot better than this, I guess.
All right, I know, right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
Aye.
There we go, we got a thumbs up, we're good, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the police and fire accident coverage for fiscal year 21. Over.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to point out, by the way, that this is a percent increase.
Say that again, Brian.
This is only a 1% increase.
Terrific, that's great. Any further discussion on this?
Okay, thank you.
Nope.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
No.
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Aye, aye, aye.
Make a motion, make a motion for Sean Riley to be appointed as a permanent member, as an associate member on the Historical Commission due to a vacancy effective May 18th, 2020 through June 30th, 2020. Over.
Second.
I got the second, yeah, you know, this vacancy was created due to Mary Hearn passing away, and she was a member of the Historical Commission for many years, she was chairman for many years, and so we are grateful for her service, and, you know, we thank Sean for wanting to step up and take this over. I know we got a letter from the Historical Commission recommending this, so. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye?
No.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries.
Aye.
All right, and I make a motion to approve the Town Administrator Review.
Second.
Brian, do we need to read this into the record?
Yes.
Second.
Should we have the clerk do that?
I think that's a great idea.
Bill, do you have it in front of you, I have it here if you don't, but.
The clerk does not.
No, that's you.
I do not have it in front of me.
Okay, that's fine, I can do it, no problem. Sorry, so, it's not very long. Town Administrator Brian Noble has demonstrated himself to be a competent and hardworking employee since his hire in August 2019. He approaches his job responsibilities ethically and professionally, interacting respectfully and competently with elected officials, staff, and the public. He has demonstrated the ability to manage the town's finances, working effectively with the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Capital Planning Committee to protect the town's financial condition. His budgeting is transparent and his proposals are easily understood. His personnel management skills are good and he is actively engaged with the town's employees, meeting regularly with department heads and staff. He's visible in Town Hall and throughout the community. He has handled contract negotiations with skill and has a good understanding of Massachusetts general laws and applies this knowledge to the operations of town government. He communicates effectively with the board, providing detailed support for decisions that need to be made and carrying out the board's agenda. He is always available to discuss issues and concerns with individual board members. At the time of this review, we are in the midst of a pandemic and therefore no formal action plan was set for this evaluation period. It is recommended that a board retreat be held at a future date to provide direction and identify formal goals and objectives.
My mother will be so happy.
Do you want me to send her a copy?
I'm already going to pray for her.
She's the one that wrote it.
Yeah. Now I've lost my agenda, here we go, all right. Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
Hearing none?
No.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Brian, for the hard work. Thank you, Brian, for the hard work you do for us, we appreciate you very much.
My job, it's great, very nice of you to have arranged a pandemic.
I'm not sure I'd want to be in your position during this pandemic, yeah, it's not without its challenges, that's for sure. Is that it for action items, Mr. Clark?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right, so, moving on to the Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, we've got a couple of things, this morning, they get 11 o'clock, the governor went through the reopening plan, and we have posted those results on the website here in town, and they're also available on the state's website as well. We'll also be releasing some guidance through our public relations firm that will help us disseminate the reopening plan to those who were not fortunate enough to watch the governor this morning. In addition, we have to, as an employer, recertify that we're running a relatively safe building and that we're keeping social distance and provide education to our staff. And to that end, Rebecca has been working diligently to promulgate the rules of that, and she's done a very good job. And I think as of this afternoon, she posted the educational videos for social distancing, proper hand washing and the use of face masks or face coverings. So that email went out so that we can be in compliance with the rules, so that we are attending to those requirements now for reopening. She's also worked very hard to come up with a plan for the eventual reopening of Town Hall and what that will look like. And she has worked very closely with Brian Kylie on establishing the physical barriers in the building, including glass protection in the treasure collector's office, the assessor's office, and the town clerk's office. And in addition, she's devised a plan to create one-way traffic in the hall of, in Town Hall. So they come in through the front door and they'll exit if they're capable from the door beside the town clerk's office. They'll also then not let more than three people into that area of Town Hall at a time, one essentially each window, and those that are waiting will be backed up six feet out through the corridor, so that they will maintain social distancing. It will also require that a mask be worn in the building if the person is physically capable of doing that. Or there are some exceptions to the mask rule, but for the most part, I expect the people that are coming into Town Hall will have their mask. At the moment, we're taking townspeople by appointment, so we've set up the Selectmen's Meeting Room so that we can keep social distancing in cases where we have to do marriage intentions or things of that nature with the town clerk's office. So I think we're doing our part to keep our community and our employees safe. We are open to any further suggestions, either from employees or from the board or the general public, once they come into the building. We want to do everything we possibly can to further the safety of the building and particularly our employees, they're hard to replace, so. We want to do that. Switching gears, I want to report that unfortunately, we did not get the EPA grant for the cleanup of the Eastern State Steel property. They did, however, award, there were 21 applicants in Massachusetts. They gave out, I think, seven, if I'm not mistaken, but they went to Pittsfield, Springfield, Worcester, Lawrence, Lowell, Brockton, and Boston. So we're not on that list, those are gateway cities, so I'm a little disappointed, I must admit, because I'm not sure where else I'm going to get that money or that kind of money to do a cleanup. So we'll keep looking, and of course, we will submit again next year to see if we can do it. But that will be, we missed last year, but this year we applied, and the year before that, we applied. So we'll apply next year, maybe they'll be tired of seeing us, so we'll see what happens. We did get a DLTA grant for financial forecasting work, which I would like to take advantage of, and I will be in touch with the, excuse me, I'm sorry, did get a DLTA grant for the zoning bylaw study. I've applied for a community compact grant for the financial forecasting work. I'd like to bring in somebody to help me produce an ability to forecast out year or two at a time, but maybe go out for a three to five-year plan. Of course, all those things go, you know, to hell in a handbasket when you get a pandemic, but, you know, we still need to keep working forward. We still are trying to put forward our Green Communities Grant, and we've had online meetings with the consultants, which were paid for by a previous grant. The nice part about it is I need the zoning bylaw study to go with the grant application for green communities, so the deadline for that application has been extended by six months, so that'll give us some time. The MVP grant, which we were working on prior to COVID, has also been postponed for the duration of whatever the COVID is. So we're not missing out on any opportunities because of the COVID situation. So, in addition, I want to know that I've been in contact with the superintendent of the Southeastern Regional Vocational School about their budget. They have withdrawn their previous budget that they submitted because of the changing formula from the state aid. But they're going to, it looks as though they're going to adopt a 112 budget starting July 1. That should reduce our share, but at the moment, I'm not making a change to the budget because it's an unknown number. So, and, you know, the only advantage would be when we finally all know what state aid is going to do, then I'll be more prepared to change that number, because I wanted to make you aware of that at the moment. Our negotiations with the Patrolman's Association and with the firefighters are still going forward. They have been reasonably productive, and I'm hoping to bring you something within the next few weeks. We did attend the meeting of the Plymouth County, the CARES Act Administration, where they got $90 million, and they're trying to figure out how to disseminate that to the towns. They haven't come up with all the rules, but we've been earmarked for $635,000. Unless they allow me to file for lost revenue, I don't think that we're going to have losses that add up to 635,000. But we'll see when the rules come out, supposedly the spreadsheet's supposed to be out latter part of this week or the first part of next week. So we'll see what that brings us. On a colder note, we've turned off the Town Hall heat, we actually did that last week, on Monday. It's been a little chilly, but we've actually gotten through with it, just fine, but dress warmly.
Oh, if it snows now, it's your fault?
Yes, well, next it'll be too hot because we haven't turned it, so, that's fine. That's what I have for my Town Administrator's Report, by the way, just want to let you know that we also did recent guidance to municipalities from the state about enforcing the COVID-19 orders, and I'll send a copy of that to your email as well. And also, like, we could all go get a haircut on May 25th, but by appointment only. And we'll take the pets to have them groomed as well, but by appointment only, and retail can reopen as of today, but curbside pickup only. So, but also, with some fines that we can levy should a retail business not comply. But they are looking at the Boards of Health as to be the enforcement agent for the COVID-19 rules, so we'll see. I will have a proposal from Comcast this week to settle that. I have been in contact with Steve Brown, and he has been fully briefed on all the ins and outs of that contract, but I'm ready to bring a contract forward to the board in executive session so that they can approve it. And then if the board does approve it, we'll execute that in a public session whenever that next occurs.
Okay.
That's what I have for you.
Terrific, any questions on Brian's report?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
No.
Dave, you good, all right. Announcements and staff reports, Rebecca, anything?
I have a couple of announcements. The EB Garden Club had a plant sale, plant sale scheduled for May 23rd. They have canceled that event, and they're hoping to reschedule in August. That is their only income that comes in, so they are hoping to reschedule. And let's see. East Bridgewater is holding their Household Hazardous Waste Day Saturday, May 30th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Gordon Mitchell Middle School. And Nancy, do you want to make the announcement for, that you said? Do that.
You can go ahead, Rebecca.
Okay, so just, this is for the COA. The COA is available to assist with SNAP or full fuel assistance applications or help with their federal census. Fuel assistance applications are being accepted through May 29th for new applicants only. Also, for the federal census, you can log on to www.2020census.gov, 2020census.gov. The stats right now, well, as of Friday, the 15th, the Massachusetts Self-Response is 61.3%, and East Bridgewater Self-Response is 73.8%. So if all East Bridgewater residents could go online to that website and fill out your federal census, that would be great. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rebecca, any questions for that, for Rebecca? Right, fill out that census, it really matters, it's how we get our funding, so much, so much of that that comes from the feds, so. Okay. Moving on to board discussions. Review annual and special town meeting warrant and plan for social distancing at town meeting. Mr. Noble, you're up, what are we doing?
Fantastic, I think we need to go through the warrant and talk about articles that we could probably postpone for this town meeting. It is very obvious that the state isn't going to be able to give us a confirm number on local aid for quite some time, probably not until December, excuse me, November. It is apparent that they're probably going to even adopt a 112 budget, or at least that's the rumor. I have no facts and I have no contacts as good as Mr. Shetty's, you know, with state legislators to know really where they're going. I do know that the state is projecting a $4 to $6 billion deficit. So that is definitely going to have some effect on what local aid that they're going to provide to us. In addition, with the social In addition, with the social media, social distancing requirements, town meeting is still allowed to go ahead. It is not covered by the, the limits on, on crowd, but it is covered by the social distancing requirement. So we will be prepared using the high school to spread out over the 800-seat auditorium. And if we have to, to expand into additional rooms so that we can maintain social distancing. In addition, we will, we will have people at the front door and we can take temperatures. And we may have our automatic temperature reader by that time, but there's no guarantee. And we will give out masks to those people who show up unprepared and we'll have hand sanitizer and anything else I can get Tim to give me. So we'll be prepared to admit people in a safe way into town meeting. So and any suggestions you may have is to make that a better process. I'm, I'm wild about them. However, I think one of the things that we probably need to do since they state probably will reduce the quorum, at least that's what my optimistic thinking is for the special, down to 10%, which would be 15. And there is no quorum required for the annual, but most likely we won't have as full attendance as we normally do. I think one of the things that we could do to make the meeting go faster and not spend as much time together is to eliminate articles that are too controversial and to postpone others that will need a confirmation of state aid on. So as I go through the warrant on some of the articles, I'm going to suggest postponing. These are strictly my recommendations to the board. The board will have to make those decisions as we come closer to the time, noting that town meeting is scheduled currently for the 23rd of June. And I really want to post that warrant around the very last week of the month or the, or the first week in June, just to give people as much warning as possible of what's on the agenda. Of course, after 2016, we can adopt a consent agenda and wipe out a lot of the, the pro forma housekeeping articles. So as not to have to waste too much time on that. However, this would be the first time the town used a consent agenda, so that would have to be slightly explained. So we want to have an efficient town meeting, but we don't want to make anybody feel rushed. So consequently, we want to be sensitive to that. We also probably won't be able to do some of the more controversial articles because the planning board will not have had time to do a full public input hearing on, on some of them. So they're postponing having those hearings until social distancing allows them to have that meeting. And so we may not be able to move those articles into the fall. Based on what I'm seeing and what I know, we're definitely going to have to come back in the fall and take a look at the budget again. If they cut state aid by five to 10%, I'm sure I can handle it, but then we would be able to go back and do some of the capital spending that we had needed to do. If, on the other hand, the state aid gets cut, the worst case scenario of 20%, we will need to reappropriate some of that capital money simply to the operating budget to get through. So those are decisions that we will have to make as time gets closer here. But going through the special town meeting articles, everything in the special I need. And they need to be done before the close of the fiscal year to make sure that we can balance our budget properly and transfer back to like the $3,000 for the library that's been collected. We have to pass that before the end of the year so they can have that back. We need to settle, we need to pay for the labor arbitration with the school and we have some labor obligations to meet, which I need appropriation for. So those articles probably will need to go forward. In the annual town meeting, we will definitely need to pass a budget. The last thing I want to do in all sincerity is to, is to work on a 112 budget. It's very painful. We're not be, we'll, we'll end up abrogating most of our labor agreements and our management agreements because you're not allowed to pay more than you paid last year. So that's something that we would want to try to avoid. In the case of the Article 3, which is the capital spending, I'm going to recommend that we postpone the town hall renovations, the central school sewer connection, two new police cruisers, smart boards, the auditorium lighting system at Mitchell School and the video surveillance project so as to preserve or protect our resources going forward. We may be able to go back in the fall and restore these items, but at the moment, I'm going to recommend that we just hold back. So those are some of the things. The other items that we need to pass, for example, we have to reauthorize the enterprise funds for both water and for the solid waste. And otherwise, we can't operate. So we definitely need to do that. We have a municipal bond where we have the excess premium to redo. We have to do that or the banks will be a little testy with us. But some of the things that we could postpone, for example, is the Health Insurance Mitigation Fund, the software for the town website for financial transparency. That was 50 grand. Also, we'll probably postpone the $500,000 of additional roadway assistance. We probably will pull back a little bit on the commitment to OPEB this year, or at least for the first six months of the year until we know where we stand. I think that we'll end up postponing action on the cultivating articles, both of them, because again, they really need a public hearing in a real sense before we move those forward. And then I'd like to, depending upon the planning board, since we're going to do the auction of the property down on Central Street, formerly known as the Hanson Land, I would like to see if we can't move that article forward, but I can only do that frankly, if the planning board can do a hearing. So I'm working with the planning board on how they want to proceed on that. So that's an issue. We also have an energy saving article on the warrant for $400,000, which I am going to postpone action on for the same reason, hush bidding our resources. In the sake of controversial articles that we could take off the warrant because of the circumstances of the meeting, I would recommend to the board that the article to sell the Gladys Farron Cottage be postponed. It's been there for so long. What's another six months at this point? And it takes the pressure off of town meeting. You don't need to bring something controversial forward and annoy people. I think at this particular time, we're looking for unity and trust from the community that if we ask them to pass these articles, that these are in the best interests of the town and they're really not controversial. We are still bringing forward an article to eliminate the elected constables in town. Again, if that was the board's decision, thinking it might be controversial, it could be postponed. So that's, so the thing, there's, there's an article for changing the personnel bylaw, which is shouldn't be controversial. So I'm going to recommend that we bring that one forward as well. We have two town roads to accept, which aren't, shouldn't be controversial. So I would recommend putting those forward. And we have articles for the revolving funds, which could be part of the consent agenda, which would get through rather quickly if explained properly. And then the last article, which is to remove any, you know, to put money into the stabilization fund. This is going to be a little hard to explain, but I'm going to recommend doing nothing with that article and let the $500,000 that's there float again back to free cash to be available in the event that the cut to local aid is more severe than I'm projecting. So those are going to be my recommendations to the board and I would certainly appreciate any opportunity to talk directly with each one of you on what you see as the priority and what you see as controversial and what you see as non-controversial so that we can have a step forward. If the legislature does not pass the reduction in the quorum, which would affect us only in the special town meeting, we can avail ourselves of the November 2016 law that no longer requires a special town meeting before the annual. We do the special town meeting because that's what we've always done and it never was a problem and it definitely delineated which spending year the money was being appropriated from. So from a point of transparency and clarity, that's a good policy. But if it means I can't pass those operating items, which I have to have, then we're going to need to redo the warrant to all things in the annual. And then I would recommend, if we're not able to do that, call it the skinny warrant and take anything out that we don't gotta have so that the town meeting becomes non-controversial and flows very easily.
Okay. You know, because we've all been doing town meeting for a very long time, that the things you think are controversial often are not. And the things you think will be fine can be, but.
I think that's fair.
Appreciate your wisdom in recognizing that some things, you know, like that, we don't, I think we all need to be cognizant of, we don't want people to feel like I've got to go to town meeting because I really care about this issue, whether it's the cultivation facility or the Gladys Farron Cottage. We don't want people to feel like they have to come out for that if they don't feel safe doing it. And, and like you said, it's not as time sensitive as something like the budget or you know, some of the other articles that really need to get done before the end of the year.
I'm in a weird sense, we, we're saying to people who come to town meeting, trust us, we're not trying to push one over on you.
Exactly.
Properly, we're showing you that this is the, you know, these are the priorities, the budget, personnel, anything that couldn't wait until we get through this pandemic is what we're going to have to put forward. Would we like everything? Absolutely. But we're really not going to be in a position to do that even as far out as June 23rd. So I guess the best way to describe it is we'll see you in the fall, you know. But the thing that's important to remember is that's going to be, you know, October or November before we, we know from the state. And I don't see a reason to do two town meetings in the fall. One would be sufficient. So we would call it only after we know what the state aid number and the impact of state aid. Pursuant to that, by the way, you know, I have reviewed with every person who'll stop and listen to me what the spending plan would be in the event that we need to make some cuts and exactly how I would accomplish that with the least amount of pain. To admit that there isn't going to be some pain, there is. If we have to make cuts, it's going to hurt because there's nothing in, if, if there was fat in the budget, you would have made me remove it long ago. So at this point, we're cutting meat and bone out of the budget if we have to cut the budget. We can only spend what we have and we have to be ever cognizant of what the ability of the town to support that tax is.
I agree. Dave, Bill, do you guys want to weigh in on this?
I'll go first, Dave.
Dave, you're on mute. Dave's in favor, I can tell.
Yeah. We've talked a lot about this and it's right. We probably won't see a special until, you know, Christmas Eve or something like that. You know, when the state decides to really give us some tickets. But, but by getting rid of the stuff now, that we really don't, and Cal is right, we don't know what is controversial. We could have an article that we don't think is anything. We could be there for an hour. But I think the ones that you've said, let's put off until the special are the ones where very easily we could have a, a long, lengthy discussion with, and rightfully so. And the people should have the opportunity to do that. And people probably hopefully in the fall, you know, will feel a lot better about going out to a town meeting and spending the time that we need to listen to them. I just don't know how comfortable people are going to be on a June 23rd.
Right. Yep.
That's it.
Bill?
I agree. I mean, if the, if the state's looking at a four to six billion dollar deficit. I mean, this, yeah, I mean, I think if the state is looking at a four to six billion dollar deficit, I mean, this next budget is going to hurt. There's no doubt about it. There's no fat in this budget right now. I certainly agree with cutting most of it out, stripping down the town meeting to what we absolutely have to do and just go from there. I mean, I don't want to see people coming in and being there for three hours. You know, we're asking a lot of people. I mean, my only concern is we don't know how much better this is going to be in the fall. This could be worse, could be better. I mean, we just don't know yet. So you know, that's my only concern with pushing some of these items off. I mean, some of them definitely need to be addressed. But you know, if that's a concern, then that's what we'll go with. So.
Yeah, you're right. We don't know whether it's going to be better in the fall, but I think we just, if it, if it's not better than we deal with it, but at least for now, we can reasonably hope that it will be. And you know, we don't have to do this until then. And, and David's right, we need people to feel comfortable and to advocate or, you know, speak for or against the things that they believe are best. And we don't always know what that is. We know what we recommend, but that doesn't mean that people would agree with us. So. And we need their trust in town government. All right. I think that's it. Does anybody have any other board discussions to bring up? I, I will just say on a personal note.
Again.
Dave, just give me one second. A week ago, almost right now, my husband was hit by a car while he was mowing our lawn. And he is home and doing really well. And I just want to thank this community for the amazing support and love and kindness that we have been shown since that happened. There was a car parade yesterday in front of our house that was pretty epic. And many of you were there and it was amazing because for the last week, I have looked out my kitchen window at that corner and just felt nothing but horror and sadness. And now when I look out that window and I look out there, I see joy and I see love and support. And so the turnaround for us because that happened was amazing. So thank you all, all of you that reached out and supported us and have helped us. And it's not over yet, but we are in a much better place than we were last week at this time. So. Thank you. Anything else anybody needs to bring up? Rebecca?
I have one more announcement that I had passed by. Miles Heager of the Republican Town Committee had sent an email about the upcoming candidate tonight. So the email stayed.
I'd just like to, again.
I think we're on a little bit of a delay.
I think so.
Did you want to say something, David?
I think we might have.
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that the election is on June 6th. We, we, we just have to reemphasize, again, people are not, you know, right now concerned about going out in the public. It please, you know, call the town clerk's office, get your ballots, get them back in before the election. We know everyone's gone through a tough time, but we still need to support the people who are running for office, you know, trying to help this town. So find a way to get out there and vote. It's very important.
Absolutely. Thanks, Dave. Okay, Rebecca, back to you. I feel like I'm in a newsroom. Back to you, Rebecca. Coming live from town hall.
So as we, as we continue to steer through the COVID-19 pandemic and look forward to the annual town election on June 6th, 2020, East Bridgewater Democratic and Republican Town Committees will host candidates tonight on May 27th, 2020. This year, we are limiting candidates tonight for those running in the two contested races, Board of Selectmen and School Committee. The chairs of the Democratic and Republican Town Committee, one additional member from the Democratic and Republican Town Committees and the staff member filming the East Bridgewater Community Access Media will be in attendance. We look forward to hosting the event and encourage the residents of East Bridgewater to join us virtually by watching live on channel 6, 9, or 98, or online at ebcam.org. Ebcam dash, eb-cam.org. If you would like to submit a question for any of the candidates, please email it to russ@ebcam.org, mcheager27@aim.com or dwpmountains@comcast.net. Please make sure you include your name and address so we can properly acknowledge your question and answer portion of the presentation. We apologize for any inconvenience, but encourage to watch and vote on June 6th, 2020. Contact the town clerk at 508-378-1606 if you would like to vote. Contact the town clerk at 508-378-1606 if you would like to vote absentee. And this is from Miles Heager, Chairman of the East Bridgewater Republican Town Committee and Diane Phillips, Chair of the East Bridgewater Democratic Town Committee.
Great. Thank you. All right. Do we have anything else? No? All right. Here are no other business. I will take a motion to adjourn.
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Got two motions, all in favor? Aye?
Second.
There we go. Thanks, everybody.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Thanks, everybody. That was fun.